Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Kellogg.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Hofstadter.
Here.
Polen.
Mm-hmm.
Von.
Here.
She maker.
Here.
Okay, um, this Saturday is the Chocolate Walk Downtown. And upcoming December 20th is the Clark Community Center Breakfast with Santa. So you can take your kids down there. Those are our upcoming things here before Christmas. Um, I did not receive any paperwork from visitors, so can we have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes, please?
Second.
Polen.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Von.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, Khan.
Von.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
Polen.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Aye.
All right, Bill Resolution 2025-34. Are there any questions on the bills totaling $134,051.76? Hearing none, can we have a motion to pay the bills?
Two.
I'll second, Khan.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Aye.
Polen.
Mm-hmm.
Von.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
All right, Nate.
All right, planning and zone, excuse me, planning and zoning met on last Wednesday and approved the variance for Millersburg Tobacco for the excess signage. Uh, sidewalk project, the engineers are working on design. I talked to them last week. Uh, they had a question on streetlight placement in these two blocks that don't have streetlights. So we're working on that. I've got them kind of a rough drawing of where the existing wall mount light fixtures are in those blocks. And then spaced out proposed pole lights in between those areas. I think three in each block will pretty much between the existing wall mounts and the pole mounts, those will pretty much light up that block open. Uh, the aggregation, I attached an analysis that Aspen sent over towards the end of last week. Just showing the, uh, compilation of the savings over the term of the aggregation. It's kind of interesting.
Did you, did you notice on that report, uh, compare the kilowatt used in six one of 22 to six one of 23 to six one of 24 to six one? Every year is the same.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not saying we didn't save money, but I'm not sure this report is accurate. Each month is is exactly the same.
Yeah. I noticed that it, obviously it changes throughout the year. I mean, that's to be expected with weather. I didn't, I didn't see it repeats. I'm gonna ask them to
I think it doesn't matter.
Just the Jews first.
Yeah, obviously we
I didn't even notice.
It's every, it's every month.
Yeah, it is.
The sequence repeats, yeah.
At least.
I'll look at that again. They never sent us that before, so I just thought it was interesting.
Three of the four years.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'll see if I can get an update on that. The demolition projects are moving forward. They're on, uh, North Mab this week, working up there on one. Airport park, met with Millersburg Electric last week, looking to finalize the quote for the lighting fixtures and holes for the sports court down there. Get those ordered by the, before the end of the year, this week. And, uh, then after weather breaks in the spring, we can get those installed. The housing study, we had the kickoff meeting with Envision on the second. Myself, uh, Mark Leininger, Arnie Oliver, three, three of them from Envision were here. Had a really good conversation about what, you know, the project and what we're envisioning it, or what we plan on seeing out of this. Started to come up with a list of people that we want them to talk to. If anybody's got anybody they want to suggest, in any, you know, resident builder, realtor, whatever, just let us know. We can make sure that they have their contact information. Also attended the United Way meeting, community meeting last week. Um, Bob, you were there as well. I thought there's pretty good conversation there about the challenges in the housing industry right now. Pretty wide cross-section was represented at that meeting, so it's good. So we want to get Envision and United Way together as well. I've talked to both of them about it independently, and they're both willing to share their information. It's good timing for both of us, so see how that comes out. The downtown traffic signals, we got, we took delivery of the hardware last week. Talked to Signal Services about installation, talked to them again this morning. Their scheduling guy is gonna contact me. He had, he didn't get ahold of me today, but they're hoping to come in, do their work, and then Pathmat, they'll coordinate with Pathmaster to come in right behind them and program everything, get us up and running, so I'm hoping relatively soon here we'll have that in and done. Phone system, so we've been having a rash of phone issues here at the office. And I'll admit, I use the phones probably the least out of anybody in this building. Dispatch has had, they're on it the most, obviously. Staticy, crackling, and it gets louder as you're, it just gets worse and worse. Seems to be weather-related. There seems to be some connection with wet weather events. It gets worse. Bright speed has been less than responsive again, as to be expected anymore. I don't mind saying that publicly. It's very disappointing, their level of service. Abysmal. So, in talking to the consultant that we use for our current phone system, what we have now is a hybrid system. It's not a true voiceover IP voip system. It's a compa, or a hybrid. There's copper into the building. And then it goes into the server and is converted over the internet to the phone system. So what we're looking at doing is going to Spectrum with a fiber connection to be true voip system. He's confident that'll solve those issues. Uh, so he ran some numbers and would, we were kind of anticipating there'd be an increase in cost, but we're looking to save like 300 bucks a month if we do this, so we got them going. They're gonna get working on it. I don't, I've been working with a consultant of theirs that works on the transition. There's a lot of paperwork going back and forth. They needed my signatures on, so I got that all back to them a couple of weeks ago. Then they came back with a list of phone numbers that we needed to identify and track down. Got all that done. Vast majority of them were old alarm lines, scada lines that we don't use anymore. We use radio frequency for our alarms in the utility system. So we can eliminate those numbers. So I, I don't know what the realistic timeframe is. I'm hoping in the next month or so we'll have an update that we've got the fiber installed and then BCS can come, or, yeah, BCS can come in and do the phone end of things. Along with that, something to be thinking about, some of you may not affect, but a couple of years from now, the Mitel system is sunsetting, they call it. They'll, it'll no longer be supported. So in a few years, we're gonna have to look at another upgrade of, of the phone system. Not, not the
To be the internal phone system.
The internal phone system, so just something that'll be coming. As with all technology, it has a lifespan, so. Got a request from Taylor with HDM. Gonna have a coffee truck out here, the 13th, this Saturday. And then the last thing, I apologize, I didn't include this, but with Nate Scolmit and I have been working, the EPA has an annual grant for electrical generators, emergency generators. We currently use a trailer mount generator for the well and for the booster station. We just move it between the two as needed. The grant covers, it's a $50,000 reimbursement, up to $50,000 reimbursement. So Nate worked with Millersburg Electric in Northeast Ohio. We're looking to install an onsite standby generator at the well with a transfer switch that would just stay there. Between the, the generators, just a scratch under $52,000. And the gas tap's about $3,300, so we're looking around $55,000. If we can get that thing done for five grand, that'd be phenomenal. And then that'd leave the, the trailer mount generator that we can just take up to the booster station if needed. It can run a few of the other lift stations, but those are slowly getting reworked to where we don't even need to do that anymore, so. Eventually, we could sell that trailer mounted generator as our goal. If we can do this, this generator in the coming year, maybe the following year, if we can get the grant again to do the one on 241, that would be in really good shape, so.
Out of curiosity, how are you able to eliminate the, the lift station power requirements?
So with different motors in them, we can use like smaller generators. They can just throw in the back of the truck. We don't have to take the trailer mount down. We don't have the need for that maybe with generators. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Chief.
Um, I gave all you guys a copy of the evidence property audit. Um, just one thing to note. The inventory was, we had 727 pieces of active evidence. Out of those 727, we have three pieces that are unaccounted for. One's from a 2012 case that we have a report from BCI that says that the print, it was a latent fingerprint, um, was unusable. Uh, so it would have never given us any results. Uh, the other is from a 2022 case where it's a driver's license and credit cards. The best that I can tell from the report is there was people in the Cleveland area using fake IDs and I guess you'd call them cloned credit cards and making large purchases at Verizon stores. They ended up at our Verizon store. The, the report stated the subject that was apprehended was, had a warrant out of the Cleveland area. Um, discussion with the prosecutor was if we wanted to have them on local charges here or allow them to go with the warrant. They went with the warrant. We sent the report over and we never got any charges. So I do have a call into the solicitor. I talked to him today. They're hopefully gonna give me some dates by the end of the week to talk to them about this, these incident, this, these items, and also, uh, what we have to do to get rid of the items, which they did not list how many are, uh, should be able to get either returned or forfeited, destroyed, um, which I know there is quite a few, so. The report discussed some of the things we'll be making changes in. Um, it's kind of generic because I don't think we should be putting out security issues or security steps and standards with our, our evidence. So just, there'll be some changes coming. We'll be rework, reworking our, um, policy. Right now, the policy is each individual officer has control of their own evidence, and it's gonna go to us, one person. Maybe two, it'll be the two sergeants, Sergeant Baker and Sergeant Markley. Uh, they'll control the intake, the storage. And then if anything needs to be transported for testing, they'll, they'll be the ones responsible for that, so we're kind of changing the way we do things. What we call the squad room is gonna end up being converted into our intake area, which is gonna be restricted access. The officers will, will bring the evidence in there, lock it in one of the lockers in there, and then one of the two sergeants will, uh, process it further into there and get it into storage. Takes away all the different aspects, and there's one, one or two people instead of four or five different people that have access to the evidence. So that's included in the report. The other thing I have is we have public records requests. And they were, had requested the waiver of the fee for the making of the copy. They're requesting a body cam videos. We charge for the disc. And they had asked for the fee to be waived. Uh, I talked to Bobby about it. We don't see anywhere in policy where either of us have the authority or the ability to waive that fee, so I guess I'm bringing it to you guys to say yes or no.
I think that when anybody else gets body cam footage, they all pay the fee, and I think the fee needs to be paid. That's my opinion. If we do it for one, we do it for everybody else.
All I'm gonna say is that all that is an, is administrative, legislators shouldn't be getting involved in public records, whether we wait, I mean, it should just be administratively, whatever you report.
It's not written in our public records policy, so even though most public records are, like, I would be probably considered the custodian.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that I can waive the fees. I, I read and read, and I made sure.
So that should be sufficient, then.
So then just charge the fee.
Then you just charge the fee. Legislatively, we shouldn't be making, we shouldn't be involved in public records requests. It's an administrative thing. It's not legislative.
Good. So just inform whoever that we charge the fee for, everyone else will charge the fee for them as well.
Yeah.
Good.
And, yeah, that's administrative. That's not something we would Um, I did want to thank you for that. That's great, the audit, the report. Thank you.
It really turned out wonderfully. 727 pieces, that's, that's phenomenal, and
And then change in the things, that, that was good. I'm glad. Thank you for doing that, yeah.
Well, we read it so simply here, you know, in five pages or whatever, but there were, how many man and woman hours were involved?
Yeah, that's a nice report.
And they're, they're doing the audit?
Yeah.
It was
A lot.
So they, they would work on it when they were together, and they had like three days out of the week that they would work together, and it probably took two or three weeks to get
That's a good report.
And then they went through, and actually, the longest part was trying to locate these three items, uh, because the officers are no longer here. I mean, the one case is, is from 2012, so, um, and trying to, to make sure that, and fall in a nook and cranny in the locker or something, um, so. But we, we have the street department helping us making some changes, um, and I think once we get done and the policy redone, I think it's gonna be a lot nicer. Just because those two will be the ones in charge. Um, I know this is very similar, and that's kind of what I told them. So it's very similar to what the sheriff's office does. They have an intake area. We're just limited on space, so we kind of have to reconvert, um, the space we have and, and use it the best we can, so. There'd be some, the hallway get a little bit more cluttered because the squad rooms where the dry cleaning gets put, and we're gonna make a shelf out in the hallway for that to be there, um, and then put one of the key code doorknobs on the squad room so that it's restricted. So I, I think it'll be a lot nicer once we get it done and get the policy going and, and, but this was definitely the major hurdle, and then getting, getting the stuff that we can get rid of, um, that'll make it a lot nicer. But once they got in there and reorganized, even with all the stuff that we have, just the reorganization, um, is it's a lot nicer in there. The evidence room is anything to brag about, but, um, it was pretty cluttered. So it's definitely way more organized, um, and that was, you know, I, I, Sergeant Markley is very, very organized. She definitely was my pick, um, and, you know, but both of them worked on it on the same amount of time. They did their own research on, on different things. We found a bunch of BCI reports that never were entered into the report, into the, our computer system. So all that stuff got, got cleaned up. Um, we're packaging the evidence differently, so hopefully we don't lose, like, we would, we would attach a sheet, an evidence tag to something, um, and it somebody's locker would get jostled around. Now we're gonna have things differently to where it's more permanently attached to the, to the piece of evidence, so we don't have that problem. So I'm happy with the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all you have, Matt?
Yep.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Bobby?
Everyone acknowledged to the November financials, and that's all of that tonight.
Okay. Upcoming committee meetings. I know the Tree City is meeting on the 15th. And, uh, as you all are aware, next meeting is our ugly sweater meeting, so we will look forward to, uh, that picture with all of us this year again. Um, any committee reports? All right, we have some legislation to read through. Um, we have second reading by title only, 2025-108. The Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the Village of Millersburg. Are there any questions? All right, second reading, 2025-31, by title only. A resolution setting wages and salaries for elected officials, salaried and hourly employees of the Village of Millersburg, and to define paid time off and employee benefits. Are there any questions? All right, second reading by title only, 2025-32. A resolution authorizing the Village of Millersburg to use employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy through PEP instead of individual surety bonds for officers, employees, and appointees. Are there any questions? And last, but certainly not least, first reading by title only, 2025-33. A resolution approving the annexation of 1.220 acres to the Village of Millersburg, also known as Jordan Properties. Are there any questions? Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. Um, Nate talked about the smart lights. Um, our new water bill system. We're gonna do both again for the January bill, and then we'll hopefully be into the new system after that. The Sill Street sidewalks. So next year will be another sidewalk project in addition to the one that moved from this year to next year. So I guess my question is, do we want to do Sill Street, or do we want to do Phase Two of Downtown, start working on that? Is there any comments? Or we can table it until next year?
Say let's table it.
Table it till next year? Okay, that's fine. Can we talk to the solicitor about the employee leave donation policy and see if we can get going on that?
Yeah, so in 2026 is when we're gonna really
Get going on.
Sit down and do the personal policy update and all that.
Okay.
And that will be
That will be part of it?
Yeah, we'll make sure that's done and in the new, uh, update.
Okay, perfect. Um, ECOBA. Can you see if some, at some point in January, February, we can get ECOBA in here? That way we can get this off of our list, and in the wintertime, maybe they don't have so much going on. The alley vacation between 419 Wise and 711 Maxwell. Did you talk to Baker?
I've not, no. Um, I've got another one, got a call as well, so I need to ask them about both.
About both? Okay, okay, that's good. Um, and I think that that's the only one. We had a lot that were in Nate's report, and then some things for next year. Probably be doing the Indigent burial site next year, I'm guessing. Okay, anybody else have anything for unfinished business?
Has anything changed with the tariff view?
No, I turned that over to the solicitor. Um, they were gonna contact the owner.
Okay.
I've not seen anything.
Do we know how long anything with that is gonna take or anything?
I don't.
I saw that it is listed as unavailable on their website to, to do ghost hunts there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Imagine that. Imagine that.
The ghosts are off at Christmas.
Yeah, apparently.
The ghosts are worried about the attorney letters they're getting in the mail.
Anything else? New business?
So I said something to Nate before I came in about, um, downtown needs to lit up brighter at night. So I don't know. We were discussing things before, but something needs to, it's just not
In specific places or just all over?
Crosswalks and, and it, I mean, it's just not lit up real good, and even, I'm not sure, but I just think it could be lit up. And I think we need to try to, Nate and I were talking, and we need to do something. Man, I know people are still driving fast through town and through some red lights and all that, but, um, I just think it needs to be as bright as we can make it. And so Nate had some, we were talking and
You gonna come up with some ideas, Nate?
I mean
Do you have, did you have an idea, Andrea?
Well, I mean, all I've, like you said, I mean, people, I mean, I'm walking over here today, and I'm crossing, and somebody just sped through the I, I mean, and I don't know if they're gonna say they didn't see me, or they were just in a big hurry, but I, 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 I want to alleviate the thing that it's so dark up there that when somebody's not dressed in, you know, white, and they cross the thing, I mean, that's not acceptable. We shouldn't have to cross the crosswalks with yellow vests on.
Right.
And I've had orange coats on before.
Yeah.
And if anybody's right, there are also people, things are happening in daylight, but then I don't want to hear, it's not, I mean, it's not lit up real good up there. Like I said, I beat the dead horse about my family walking the dogs around, and it's, I mean, one time we walked off the thing there, and we about got hit with two dogs, and I, I don't know, but I just, I feel like our job is public safety is best, if we can, and I take it, I just, I want to do more, and I don't know what we can do.
I, I'm willing to do whatever we can do, but it, I also know that in the end, if, if somebody's not paying attention and, and causes an accident, that's not our fault.
Somebody's not paying attention?
If somebody's not paying attention and turns and hits someone.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's, you know.
I mean, yeah, I mean
I mean, people need to be paying attention when they're driving.
They need to be slowing down through the intersections. I don't know how much, I don't know how much more I need to say this. People need to be going slow through the intersections when they're turn, you know, whether I, I just, it's just very upsetting. I've been in the intersection walking when I have the thing, and somebody almost hits me, and I'm getting yelled at. And it's happening to a lot of people, and then they say they didn't see the person, or it was too dark, or it was, I don't know, but
So the company that we bought, the RRFBs, the crosswalk
Yes.
mid-block crossings we put in, they have a whole line of products.
Okay.
I'll look through there.
Okay.
See what, what other crosswalk systems they have. I know I had seen some, some products of theirs for rural areas where there's maybe not streetlights that as a user comes up and activates buttons, there's streetlights at that location that come on.
That would be nice.
So maybe a factory kind of on an edge of town that has a lot across the road for their employees when they cross, that those lights would be on, but they're off other times.
So it would be lit up more when there's somebody going to be in the crosswalk?
I'm wondering if there's not something along that line
Does Worcester Brush do something like that?
Yeah, it's similar to that kind of situation.
That's what you just said, Worcester Brush, people park over here and let, and walk across. That is exactly what they have up here.
Is it additional lighting, or is it just flashing lights?
They have, yeah, they have the flashers there. This is actual, like, white streetlights that come on. It wouldn't work well here because it's already lit. Yeah, I don't think you'd notice another streetlight or two coming on. You, you would, but not, it's not gonna have a drastic effect like uh, out at Holmes Cheese, if all of a sudden the streetlights come on, you know something's going on there, because there's no, no other lighting out there. Not picking on Holmes Cheese, that's just the first thing in my mind.
So the street, they're not real bright, the little, you know, our decorative things. That's not real bright. I mean, if you can see, I mean, it doesn't light it up a whole lot.
I do have to tell you, though, compared to what they used to
Yeah, that's what he said.
I mean, they were yellow, darker. These are, these are lighter.
Horrible.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know what you said. People, we can't stop people from driving stupid and not being careful and hitting pedestrians, but I don't want to hear it's not lit up enough, or I didn't see him, or the people had black. I don't want to hear that.
No, I think there's options. We could, more lighting.
More lighting.
More powerful lighting than, than the existing lights, brighter lights. That's gonna brighten things up. But then I want to look what other crosswalk products are specifically out there.
You know, literally, there are some people that are working for the county that are, is to come down here, getting in their cars and driving.
Yeah, they're doing that at the portal now.
They're just driving down.
Yeah, they're driving, yeah.
I have found it interesting, though, with the lights at the post office. When you push it and walk across, cars coming up, all of a sudden, you can hear them slow down when they see the lights are flashing.
He's invisible.
So there, there is something to having something new and
Flashy.
bright and eye-catching that actually does draw their attention. I don't know if there's anything
Yeah, I don't want, I'm not knocking the ODOT's project at all, Berlin was a huge improvement in my opinion, but the lights that are on all the time, you become numb to them. You don't, I, I like when it's a user activated, that means somebody.
Absolutely, something that's not there on.
They're becoming numb to the streetlights, no offense, they're not.
So I'll.
That makes me mad, thank you.
That's good, that's great.
Thank you.
Anybody else have new business? I did want to thank Bobby, Mary, and Jessica for putting up Christmas decorations outside and inside, it looks wonderful. They have more for next year, so it looked very nice and welcoming.
The Grinches didn't help.
None of them were anywhere to be found. They can put them away, they can put them away.
Okay, we do not have anything for executive session, so hearing nothing else, we have a motion for German.
One second.
That's a tie. He can have it, okay, we always give it to him. Pullen.
Hi.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Kellogg.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
Vaughn. And She maker.
Aye.
All right, have a wonderful evening, stay warm, and don't forget your ugly sweater next time.
We could just get you a dress.